Good morning.
Good morning.
Well, welcome to the workshop, Charting Our Course Responsible Growth this morning. It is August 26, 2025 at 9:00 a.m. Commissioner Canard, would you like to lead us in our invocation this morning? And Mr. Sher, would you like to lead us in the pledge? Did you hear me? Okay, thank you.
Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you in prayer again this morning, so thankful for the many blessings in our lives. Lord, we thank you for the opportunity to gather here to listen, to have great communication, and pray that you would guide us as we do look towards the future of our community. Pray that you would give us the ability to listen and comprehend what's presented here today, make great decisions going forward. Lord, as always, we pray for our first responders, there are men and women in uniform around the world. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, Madam Clark, would you do the roll call for us, please?
This is a public workshop of the Citrus County Board of County Commissioners this 26th day of August 2025. In attendance are Chair Rebecca Bays, First Vice Chair Diana Finnegan, Second Vice Chair Janet Barrick, Commissioner Jeff Canard, Commissioner Holly Davis, Assistant County Administrator Maricel Rodriguez, and County Attorney Denise A. Diamondlin.
Thank you. Next up, I think Eric Linden is going to get us kicked off here.
Good morning, Chair Commissioners. Eric with Growth Management. A couple of months ago, the board discussed being more, taking a more proactive approach on growth, and one of those items was looking at updating or modifying the comprehensive plan. Commissioner Canard specifically cited one example that he liked out of St. John's County. So Steve Howard and I hunted down the group that wrote St. John's County's updated comp plan, which is a company called Inspire. They're here today, Pat and Chris, to talk about what options we have if we choose to move forward with that. And then we also, one of the, one, also, another one of the items that was discussed was impact fees, mobility fees, concurrency, how do they relate? How do they differ? We have Heather from Neighbors in Giblin to talk about that. So I'm just here to do the introductions. So with that, I'll leave it with Pat and Chris with Inspire, and they can talk about comprehensive planning.
Thank you so much. Welcome.
Thank you. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Commission, Chris Darty. I am a principal and planner at Inspire Place Making Collective. And as Eric mentioned, we've got a lot of really cool examples of comprehensive plans that we've worked on throughout the state, particularly county comp plans, some that are, you know, very similar in some of the growth pains that you're experiencing here in Citrus County. I have with me Pat Tyeski. She too is also a principal and a planner at Inspire Place Making Collective. We've worked together for over 18 years now at the same firm, just different names throughout the years, so. So we're really excited. Thank you again for allowing us to share some of our experience. We don't have all the answers, but we're here to kind of help you walk through, you know, what we've learned and some of the other things that we've learned throughout the years and experiences that other counties are kind of going through and what they've done with their comprehensive plans. So before we jump into the meat of the presentation, I just wanted to kind of give you some of the historic growth rates and what we're seeing throughout the state. So between 2015 and 2020, you were at about a 6% growth rate, so it's a little bit over 1% per year. But between 2020 and 2025, that growth rate doubled, and I know this is not news to you all. But the point here is that in 2020, that was the last time you updated your plan. So that was when you did the evaluation and appraisal process. That has changed at the state level now, so in 2023, the statutes changed. Now you have to look at some different things, and we're going to go through that here in just a moment. But we do recognize that there are some things in the plan that probably should be updated to kind of stick with the times and maybe provide some more innovative planning opportunities. Sorry about the fonts, they got a little messed up here, but we've got some of your neighboring counties and some of the counties that we've worked in. And Eric mentioned St. John's County, 65% growth in the last 10 years, which is a substantial amount, considering the majority of that growth is in the unincorporated area of St. John's County. So not unlike Citrus County, where you have two municipalities. Again, in St. John's County, they have, I think, two, three if you count Marineland, but that's, yeah, that's a tiny municipality that straddles both Flagler and St. John's. The other part about this slide is we actually worked in all of those counties at one point, or were finishing up their comprehensive plans. So four of those counties were in the process of finalizing those comprehensive plans. And all of the statistics that you see here are for the unincorporated area, so that does not include the municipalities. Taking a quick look at what the University of Florida Bureau of Economic and Business Research has projected, this is just for the unincorporated area of Citrus County. The bottom green line is the median projection, which by state law, that is what your comprehensive plan should be planning for. And then that gray line at the top is kind of where the state has identified kind of the peak of what they think maybe you'd be able to hit, and that's the, what's considered the high projection. What we've found in communities that have grown a lot over the last five, 10 years is that really the projection should probably be in between the two. So we call that the average, the median, and high. What this doesn't show is the seasonal population, which you're also required to project, and Bieber only does permanent. So we actually go through the process of identifying what that share would be for the county when we do go into that process. But that just gives you an idea of what that looks like. So what does that look like in terms of percentage? So again, last 10 years, about 19% growth here in the county, but what they're showing for the next 25 years is an 18% growth. We think that's a little conservative for Citrus County. But again, those are some of the things that we'll tease out as we start to look at the population projections. So before I turn it over to Pat, this is our agenda for today. Pat's going to introduce our team. I know we're new to the county, so we want to make sure you learn about us and who we are, take you through kind of the approach, look at what's required by the state, and then how we address each community. Everybody has their own unique circumstances and different geographies and things that we're dealing with. And then give you an idea of what we're learning throughout the state in our experience with other counties. And then talk about that dreaded Senate Bill 180 and how our clients are navigating that process and then advancing forward with this effort if we do, in fact, decide to go through that comp plan update process.
All right, so let's talk about the team. Who is Inspire? So technically, Inspire is a pretty new company. We've been in business for two and a half years, but if you ask me, I've been working here for 25. Chris just mentioned, he's been working with this group for 18 years, so how does that happen? So I started, I started my career in the public sector, but in the year 2000, I made the switch to the private sector, and it was a small firm in Orlando. And that firm got acquired by another firm in 2011, and that firm got acquired by another firm in 2015. And then two and a half years ago, we were part of a larger corporation. It was mostly an engineering company. And George, our Inspire president, decided that he wanted to create a company that was more planning focused, so he created Inspired, and he invited five of us to come with him as principals. So when we spun off from SNME, we came with the clients, with the projects, with the background, with the equipment, with the personnel. So basically, it was the Planning and Landscape Architecture divisions from SNME that became Inspire. So even though we're new, we have many years of experience. So when we first got started, it was about 14 of us total that came out of SNME. We have grown to about 38 people. Now we have offices in Miami, Orlando, Tampa, Durham, Atlanta, and Boston. So as you can see, we have grown, we have made a lot of progress. The 38 people that I mentioned, we have 14 certified planners, American Institute of Certified Planners, and we have a few candidates. That means they have passed the test, they just need to complete some requirements, and they will also be AICP. So something that attracted us to this idea of becoming Inspire was that most of us had worked in the public sector. And even when I made the switch in 2000, these 25 years, I have only worked for the public sector. That's where our passion is. We want to help communities around the state, now around the country. So our goal is to partner with local governments to create great places, safe streets, and thriving communities. That's what moves us, and that's what we would like to do with Citrus County. So in terms of the experience, I mentioned that, you know, the work that I've been doing for the past 25 years with Inspire has been in the public sector. So Chris and I haven't been working together for 18 years. We used to, you know, both work on comprehensive plans and both work on land development codes. As of lately, it has been more like Chris has been taking the comprehensive planning projects, I have been focused on the land development projects, but still, we'll work together, we collaborate, I help with our complaints, he helps me with the land development codes. So in total, we have worked in about 66 comprehensive planning projects. This includes rewrites, amendments, ears, you know, all the different aspects that are included in the comprehensive planning arena. Land development projects, code projects, same thing, rewrites of land development codes, form-based codes. We also do historic preservation, so Florida master site files, historic surveys, you name it. We also do redevelopment, which is, you know, when you put all these things together, when you do comprehensive planning, you have to know about land development regulations, you have to know about redevelopment. So we have had about 55 projects in the redevelopment area. And then the last one, it's a small number, but I think it's very significant because we serve as extension of staff in many communities doing development review. When you're in the trenches, working with the applicants, knowing what the issues are, that's how you become more familiar with what's going on in the public sector. So in terms of the approach, again, the font is playing tricks on us. So comprehensive planning laws in Florida are pretty structured, and we know that we all have the required comprehensive plans. Every seven years, we have to update them. We do the evaluation and appraisal reports. So Chris mentioned, your last one was done in 2020. It's coming, you know, very close to the time when you're going to have to update your comprehensive plan, do the evaluation and update it. So the way we do this, typically, you have to meet statutes. So the first thing that you have to look is what has changed since 2020 that we have to address? We do a matrix, and we figure out, you know, specifically which statutes have changed. Have you addressed them already, or do we need to address them as part of the update? One thing that I loved from the last, one of the last changes to the statutes was that now we have to update the data and analysis. I don't want to name any names, but I have worked with counties where I asked, where is your data and analysis? So I know where the GOPs, the goal objectives and policies come from, and they don't know where the data is. They lost it a long time ago, and it's impossible to work on a comprehensive plan when you don't have the background information. So now we have been helping all these cities and counties update your data and analysis. First, how are you going to grow? What do we have today? Where are we headed? So that's very important to have. Now, the state requires that you have a 10-year and a 20-year timeframe for your comprehensive plan. So that's something that, you know, if we were to start today, it would be a 2045 projection year, but you know, if it's a 2026 plan or a 2027 plan, it has to be 10 and 20 years. There are about nine or 10 required elements. We know you have a lot of optional elements, you have a total of 17, and that is something that we work with some communities where they want to keep those. I'm working with one right now where they have an economic development optional element, and they feel like it's very important for them to have it, so we're going to keep that. So that's something that is unique to each community. Now, beyond the statutory requirements, some communities decide that they want to do a whole vision exercise. Priorities have changed, we have grown a lot since the last one. Maybe it's time to go back to the community and ask, where are we now? Where do we want to go? And how do we get there? So that's another component that we include in our comprehensive plans, and most of the clients that we have elect to go that route, because it makes sense to do that. So with that, I'm going to go back to Chris.
So now we get to talk about our experience with other counties throughout the state. As you can see here on the slide, we've worked with a number of counties. Some of those are actual project logos, and some of them are their actual county logos. So Sumter County, Pasco County, Polk County, a lot of these counties may even be your neighbors. So you're experiencing a lot of the similar issues that these counties are experiencing. So with Pasco County, this is an interesting effort. It's a five-year process that they identified, five year actually, probably six or seven years ago. We are in year five now, finishing up the comprehensive plan. We took about 14 months to go through the visioning process, so that's the community engagement, learning about what the community wants to be when they grow up. And really, what it boiled down to was they wanted to protect the rural area, and this is going to be kind of a common theme that we're hearing from a lot of communities throughout the state, but protect the rural area, but they also wanted walkable communities. They've had a lot of development in the last 10 years, and not all of it aligns with what the community was, you know, really wants. So we looked at identifying nodes, so activity nodes, and so we established new future land use categories, really focusing on mixed use, and hopefully, you know, as that starts to take shape, that it ends up being more vertical mixed use, and they're going to be at varying scales. So we have like a neighborhood scale, or an urban scale, or more of a medium-type scale. And that all depends on, you know, what node we identified, and then prioritizing transit corridors in those areas where you've got a lot of ridership, so a lot more folks living in those nodes. So those are kind of the primary. There was a lot, actually, that we learned, and a lot that's baked into these different comp plans. We're just kind of giving you high-level bullet points from each one of these, but Pasco County, like I said, coming to a close here in the next few months. Flagler County, as you can see by the map, there are really only kind of two colors, two really primary cities in Flagler County, very similar in terms of, you know, having really two responsible municipal governments within the county boundary, but they're massive when you look at the proportion of how large those cities are. So what really has came through during this, again, to protect the rural area, the county really doesn't have really any mechanism to keep these communities from annexing and annexing into these areas. The issue is, is that they're annexing into the unincorporated area with no services. They have no ability to serve, particularly the city to the southwest, no water, sewer, you know, even though they're required to be able to provide those services. So what, really what that boiled down to is looking at ways to help protect these areas, and they're looking at establishing interlocal service boundary agreements with those communities. And what that does is set up who's going to provide what services within a given area. And so that's something that they'll be endeavoring in the next several years as they finish adopting their comprehensive plan. And that's coming up for adoption here, I believe, in about a month. They're in the process of state review. Hopefully, they don't identify any more restrictive or burdensome language. I think we were pretty benign in that respect, but again, we'll wait to find out. That's still kind of a new territory that we're dealing with, so we'll wait to see what the state comes back with. St. John's County, another community that has an interesting perspective in terms of growth, they manage their growth through a development boundary, so you may think of it more of like an urban growth boundary. Now, in this case, there really isn't, there wasn't a way to determine when to move it or how to move it. What we identified is that they have really no capacity within the boundary today to accommodate the population projections. So what we did is start to look at ways to do that, that's mutually beneficial to the community, and that's identifying a bonus structure and criteria with respect to affordable and workforce housing, because attainable housing in the county is really tough. Their teachers, nurses, firefighters, police officers really have no means of entry-level housing in St. John's County. So that's been a huge struggle, and that's something that we think in the comprehensive plan, we've identified and will really make some end roads with respect to attainable housing. And then infill, they've spent a lot of money in infrastructure, in bolstering their road network as well as their utilities, and that's, those are the areas that we've identified where the growth and development can occur. And then providing for wetland and upland preservation. Preservation in St. John's County is kind of a big theme, similar to Citrus County. You've got the wildlife management preserves, and you're kind of bookended on the east and west, which I think is kind of a really nice example of almost a little growth boundary, if you will, already. So what we do within that in the next 25 years is going to be really important, I think, because you're kind of limited on where you can go from here. In Polk County, again, another similar story, except Polk County has 17 municipalities that they have to coordinate with. I mean, that's a completely opposite end of the spectrum, and that's why we think establishing interlocal service boundary agreements with them is going to be critical, because these municipalities are kind of, at this point, overlapping each other and fighting over utilities, which is a whole other animal, but they're looking at establishing an urban service area, so you have that distinct urban and rural area of the county. And then to do that, they're looking at incentivizing the transfer of development rights, so providing for densities from the rural area to the urban area. This is a recent assessment that we did for Indian River County. They were going through a comprehensive plan process, and they needed to look at, you know, what they, how the urban service area is working, because that's what they use to manage growth. And what we determined is they don't really need to move the line, because they had adequate capacity from a future land use perspective to accommodate the growth. Really, it was just a matter of, are we going to have enough utilities? And I think, you know, at this point, they do. But again, this is a way that they manage growth, all of the cities, actually, when they annex, they become part of the All of the cities, actually, when they annex, they become part of the urban service area. So that was another one of the kind of tricky parts of managing the unincorporated growth as you start to, you know, deal with annexation. Again, a pretty common theme here with counties that are, you know, kind of dealing with really aggressive cities. And I'll let Pat talk about Hillsborough County.
So we did some work with them not too long ago, and it was, you know, when you have a county that it's pretty much built out, especially in the Tampa area, they wanted to bring back the idea of the corner store. You know, some people are tired of driving to just get, you know, some milk or bread. You know, how can we become creative and allow that? So they have a system called a locational, a commercial locational criteria. Basically, you do not have to go through a comprehensive plan amendment in order to create a corner store in a residential area. So they have the system in place. It has some glitches, you know, that they have to figure out, but that is something that, you know, we thought it was creative and should work. They are also working on figuring out the expansion of the urban service area, just like, you know, Chris mentioned with some of the other counties. It seems like it's the common denominator. And something else that they did was, you have seen the trend, you know, for the whole state, shifting from the functional classification of roads, you know, arterial collector, because what an arterial means, what a collector means is, you know, how fast can we move cars through town, to a context classification. Yes, you have an arterial, but if the arterial is in the rural area, it looks one way. If it goes through the middle of a small town, it should look differently, and it should move cars in a different manner. So that's something that we have been trying to incorporate and trying to explain to the communities, that there are tools out there that we can use to tame the traffic and make sure that it does not destroy your communities.
So as I mentioned, we're going to briefly talk about Senate Bill 180. The one thing I will say is that there looks to be some changes to the language here in the near future, so maybe not being as restrictive and burdensome to local governments that are, you know, trying to provide meaningful regulations, you know, that, you know, that are... And does everybody know what Senate Bill 180 is? That's the, okay, all right.
Just because we have made some people listening online potentially, can you just give a brief synopsis?
Sure. Over the last session, the legislature passed a bill under the emergency management bill that essentially restricts kind of home rule for all municipalities and counties that have been impacted by a hurricane. And if you look at, I think it was the three hurricanes, I can't remember which ones, but the named storms, if you look at the mapping, it covers the entire state. So essentially, every city and county within the state of Florida is limited in amending their comprehensive plan or their land development regulations that create more restrictive or burdensome regulations or amendments within the comprehensive plan and land development code. So that's kind of the gist of Senate Bill 180. So it essentially takes away home rule from the jurisdictions to do any, like, additional planning than what you already have today, which is problematic, because you have to plan, right? The comp plan says you have to plan for at least 20 years. So it's a little tricky. But what we'll say is that these are our clients that we're working with right now, so current comp plan clients, current land development code clients, most of which are staying the course. Now, there are some that are kind of pulling back some language. We did have a tree preservation ordinance that we just went through with St. John's County, and they decided to leave one measure out that they felt like was too burdensome, but they did leave two in that were more restrictive, if you, you know. So again, it's a balancing act, I think, but it's also, you know, it's still new territory. And, you know, we're working with our local legislators, and hopefully, there will be more clarity in this process. We are also really close with the folks in Orange County, and Vision 2050 was the comp plan that came back most recently after their adoption. And they're having to go back and kind of readjust, and then they have to go back through the process. So that was a complete overhaul of their comprehensive plan. I mean, they completely turned it upside down. So yes, there were things that were more restrictive and burdensome in that plan, but that was almost 10 years in the making. So that's a little bit of background for Orange County. We did not work on that comp plan, and nor do we think a comp plan should ever take 10 years. So just to be clear, that's not a normal process. And speaking of timeline, we have about a 16, 18-month process here. We're not going to go through this whole thing, but what, you know, what we do want to emphasize is that this is a community-driven process. We have interview sessions, pop-up events, community workshops, and those would be a series of workshops, and then updating the entire comp plan from the data analysis to all the elements. That may mean consolidating the 17 elements into things that are a little bit more easy to, you know, digest. So we are here for questions and discussion on comprehensive planning here in Florida. So we welcome the board to do so.
Commissioner Canard.
Yeah. The public input portion of it had my interest right from the beginning. That was going to be a question I brought up, so thanks for touching on that. Could you go into a little bit more of what that looked like, particularly in St. John's County and down in Pasco County?
Sure. So Pasco County, again, a little bit more of a protracted process. We had, you know, probably four months of planning and then 10 months of intensive engagement. We were in every district, commission district, and conducted visioning meetings. We had stakeholder interviews. We had focus groups where we talked about specific issues. So whether it be related to transportation, rural preservation, housing, those are some of the issues that we touched on. Trying to think, what else did we? We had a project website that was integral in kind of pushing out the messaging, and then we had surveys. I think we did four surveys throughout the five years, and that was touching on different aspects. So whether it be, you know, talking about what you want to see in the community, and then how are we actually going to do it? And, you know, maybe that's, hey, are you willing to tax yourselves a little bit more to provide for, you know, more land acquisition dollars or, you know, whatever the case may be? So we kind of went through that whole process with Pasco County. And then in St. John's County, a little bit shorter window, but again, we touched on each commission district and went through visioning workshops. And so we don't actually tell you what you need to hear or what you need to do. Our process is built to be a, I guess, a sequential visioning process. So we'll start with talking to staff, understanding what's going on in the community. Then we'll start to have these interview sessions with local community leaders and folks that have, you know, understanding of the comp plan or, you know, different topic areas. And then from there, that's when we decide what we think we need to do for those first workshops. And then each workshop builds off the prior workshop. So we're taking information, synthesizing it, and then, oh, we have new activities that we're going to need to do, because now we've got specific issues we're going to have to address. And so that's how we've done it with all of the communities that we work in. We don't prescribe a, you know, set number of activities that you have to do or, you know, curate something that's not needed for the county. It's specific to what you all have going on here in Citrus County.
Just one follow-up question to that. I don't know what the population of St. John's is, but Pasco's roughly 600,000. What's the participation rate from the public?
That's a, that's a good question. So in terms of Pasco County, we, we had many different events. And so we had pop-up events, we had the workshops. I'd say we had about 300 attend at varying points within the community workshops. And we did, I think we did eight workshops total. And then for the website, I think we had about 10,000 hits on the website, 1,400 surveys, Goodness.
I've heard that the pop-ups work really well, that more so than having a workshop and having people come to you, it's, you're taking it and meeting people in their place, and that you get a better participation rate by doing pop-ups. Did you find that to be the case?
Yeah, and it kind of depends on the event. I know in Port St. Lucie, they have this citizen summit event where essentially, they're coming to learn about the community, and we were able to do a pop-up there. And basically, when we say pop-up, it's actually like a mobile workshop. So we'll have certain activities available for folks to participate in, and they may be similar in nature to what we would do at a workshop. But we're also spreading the word and getting them to go to the website and to, you know, respond to the survey. And sometimes we'll have other activities, like we may have a mapping, an interactive mapping exercise, where they can, you know, tell us certain things, you know, based on a specific geography.
So here's my concern with the talks and the potential of whatever the state may decide about property taxes. We saw what happened to Florida with COVID. I mean, people came here by the thousands. I mean, we had over 1,000 people a day moving here. If you eliminate property taxes, it's going to be a free-for-all. And I think Senate Bill 180 has set us up to kind of handcuff us, if you will, from preventing how we're going to be more restrictive in our building codes and having some guardrails on it. Have you built this into your calculations? Have you thought about if this happens? Or even if you have exemptions up to 500,000? I mean, that's pretty significant. I mean, you're going to take a lot of, that's going to be a lot of folks that's going to come in. Now, I know that offsets probably by a sales tax. I've saw recently where I think they've calculated it and said it would need to be 14 and a half percent sales tax rate if you went that direction. But there's other considerations, and I don't know how you would build that in when we're talking about FEMA or storm recovery, the cost of recovery, if you can't have more restrictive building codes and we're not building to a higher standard, that downtime and the cost to recover from it. And also, what's the impacts? Or have you thought about what the impacts potentially are to the reinsurance dollars and the marketplace for that and having the insurance in the state?
Yeah, I mean, those are all really, you know, really important topics and a good question. We don't typically go through like a financial analysis as part of the comp plan. We do have a capital improvements section...
I don't mean it from that plan. I'm just saying, if we have this explosive growth...
Sure.
And if you're planning for this, and you, and all of this growth does come, and you're trying to look at how you're going to guide yourself for your growth, that means we probably want stuff further away from the water. We want, we want to condense it so that we have some protective along with what we already have in preservation. I guess that's more, more the guardrails of what I'm talking about.
Yeah, in terms of, you know, like, projections, so that's kind of like the first thing we do in a comprehensive plan, like, how many people are we planning for? Like Chris mentioned, the median projection is like the bottom of, you know, what we are supposed to be looking at. We have worked with municipalities where they go and say, Beaver, they're wrong. We're going to grow different than that. And the state will accept a different methodology, as long as it is, you know, reputable old, you know, normal methodology. But that's why also the system has the every-seven-year update. And again, you can always amend your plan before that. I mean, nobody's stopping you from changing your comprehensive plan. But one example that I wanted to mention, so years ago, we worked with a municipality, it was a small municipality, and they said, no, forget about Beaver, we need our own projections because we're going to build a wastewater treatment plant, and that growth is going to explode. And we're going to do economic development, and it's going to be completely different. So we adjusted the population projections, we had a higher population projection, and then the wastewater treatment project just didn't happen. So they ended up with over-projecting everything. So now you have a capital improvements element that says we need, you know, more roads and more parks and more everything, when in reality, it wasn't the case. So they had to correct the course. So that's something that, you know, we do not recommend a comprehensive plan that addresses the worst-case scenario, because you may be stuck with something that may or may not happen. So I think it's more of a, you know, not to be too conservative with your population projection, but not to be overly, you know, too high, because then you end up with something that may not be real. Yes, things are changing quickly in the state, and, you know, if, let's say you adopt the comprehensive plan next year, and two years later, you see that the population projections are getting exceeded, it's time to, you know, address that. But, yeah, we have to be careful to go either way.
Thank you. Commissioner Barrick.
I was very much on the same ideas as Commissioner Base. When I look at the projections you have, 10 years, we had a growth of a certain percent. Over the next 25 years, the difference is only going to be a 2% higher than what we've had in the last 10 years. So the growth rate is actually going to slow down. Okay? But from experience, how many people did you actually interact with in a county? Okay? And how did you get the surveys back from the people? Okay? What was the population that actually responded compared to, you know, you sent out 10,000? What was your response? Did you get back 100? Did you get back, you know, 50%? Okay? Working in these workshop-type settings, to me, this is more like a lecture setting, not a workshop. You're telling us, we ask you a couple of questions, maybe some of the people in the audience ask a question or two. And then, you know, to me, that's not a workshop. That's more of a, well, here's what we have, this is, you know, we get to ask, and this is how much we're going to charge you to do this service. So my question is, what are you going to do that's different to get the residents out there to actually respond and get us some really good information from the residents? We have town halls, we have workshops, off and on. And when we have them, you'll get maybe 15, 20 people at a town hall. You'll get, maybe in Citrus Springs where I live, you'll get 100. Okay? So the thing is, you're, we don't have a lot of people that actually respond to this type of, you know, gathering of information. How is your company going to actually be able to say, well, we're going to get you the responses that you need, so that, say, 50% of your population, this is what they want to see, this is what, you know, what they're telling you? Because I'd like to see 50% of our population tell you. Okay? We get over 50% to vote, but why aren't we getting them out to town halls?
Yeah, it is really difficult, especially if the message that is put out there is too technical. We're updating our comprehensive plan, come and participate. Who cares about that? Who knows what that is? When we went through the pandemic, we had to learn a lot of different tricks, you know, to communicate with the public. One thing that we started doing a while back, we have partnered with Social Pinpoint. It's a platform that helps us... It's a platform that helps us reach out to those people who are tech savvy, who use the internet. It's like, that's just one segment of the population. And we tried to do exercises there that people can participate from home. Like maybe they're too busy with their kids, there are soccer matches, you know, no time to go to a town hall meeting or something like that. So those people have at least that option, that they can do the interactive map, the survey, the budgeting exercise. There are like different tools to do that. Something that we do a lot, and again, is for that segment of the population, is social media posts. So we work with the Public Information Officer and we have blasts, you know, like getting people out there to know there's a workshop coming. And when we wore these invitations, we wore them in a way that a regular citizen can understand. Now, we're talking, we're going to talk about your future, we're going to talk about how the county is going to grow. You know, that should get people's interest. Now, we understand that not everybody's tech savvy, not everybody's using the internet. So we have to make sure that we reach out to those people who are not going to be turning on a computer to participate in a workshop. So we, something that we do that has worked really well, we create this, they look like business cards and it's the project card. And we have thousands printed. We give each one of you some of those cards, we put some at the counter, we put some at the library, we put some at the community center. And it's for people to look at it and it's like, oh, what's going on? And it, you know, they look good, they look, you know, eye-catching. And it's like, to learn more, either go to this website or call this number. So it's just getting the word out is so important because we hate it, we hate it, hate it, hate it. When we get to the hearings and somebody shows up and says, I didn't know we were going through this. With the city of Port St. Lucie, where we have had excellent participation, we, the city, sent out emails to every single resident in the city. They had their email address. So yeah, some people came back saying, take me off that list, I don't want to hear about these meetings. But a lot of other people came to the meetings, like, how did you find out? We learned, you know, from the email. So we have learned a lot of different tricks. The other one is, yes, workshops. We tend to use more like the open house type of technique where we do a very brief introduction, you know, 20 minutes. And then we have ESOS with boards. And then we have a person per ESOL helping people with the activities. So maybe where should the growth be, you know, put in, in the, in the county? And then we have a map and they have little stickers where, you know, it should be closer to the urban area, it should be away from the wildlife quarters. So based on the topics that we discussed with staff and, and Board of County Commissioners, we'll know which types of questions we want to ask the population. Now, when we use these surveys, for example, when it is done through the Social Pinpoint website, this platform gives us amazing summary tools where we can really see what the main issues are from the community side. Now, for those people who are responding to this survey in paper, you know, sending it by mail or bringing it to, to the planning department, we have a way of summarizing those and incorporating them into the online surveys. We talked about the pop-up events. We like to have printouts of that survey. Somebody's coming by, can you please take this survey, you know, fill it out and there is an address here where you can send it to. We like to involve the kids, the youth. We like to go, to be able to go to the schools and talk to the teenagers. Talk about those who are expected to live here with the growth that we're preparing for them. So we try to, you know, involve the community as much as we can. Now, it's, I understand, it's frustrating when you show up to a workshop and just five, 10 people show up. But our goal is to reach out to as many people as possible, to make those invitations user-friendly, easy to understand, and be ready for, for the crowds.
And I just wanted to touch on a couple of things. If, if we did want to, to get a certain percent response on a survey, we could go through the statistically valid process. Now, that takes a little bit more time and it, you know, it's a little bit more expensive, but you can, you know, get a, a greater return. Now, the, the survey that we do traditionally is through the website, through the project website. And that, that touches everybody. So it's not statistically valid, but it is a, a survey that goes to everybody.
I got one thing to say. Our citizens are older.
Sure.
There are a lot of citizens my age and older do not go on websites, do not answer things.
Sure.
We have gone to meetings with the crime watch people and they've told us, unless you know the website, you don't go on it. So they will not respond to that. And when, when I'm saying older, you know, we're people that don't do that type of thing. Now, the other thing is the time, timeframe. We have this at nine o'clock in the morning. If you look behind you, see how many people are here? Okay, there are probably a whole lot more watching it on TV than are here, but they can't respond to anything we're saying. In other words, we, they can't do the back and forth. And that's where I have a problem because when we have these type of things, we spend time and we do learn, which is good for the board, okay? And a few people that are in the audience can actually get up and ask questions, but the majority are silenced because we're not there.
There's nothing they can do about that.
No, but, but.
I, I, I hear what you're saying, but we can only do so much to educate the public. I mean, we, we have a budget hearing once a year and people still don't show up. There's only so far that we can provide the information, get notices out there and try to get their engagement, but they can't make people show up. Commissioner Kennard?
Walkability is certainly much easier to achieve in municipalities. Do you have some examples of unincorporated areas where there's been some degree of success in achieving walkability? This, this board, I think, has been fairly consistent that in applications that come forward, we want to see some mixed use. We want to see some neighborhood commercial there. Fewer, creating fewer trips on our roads, getting some of those people to be able to go from their neighborhood right up to that corner store or, you know, the, the grocery store or hairstylist or whatever it might be. Do, do you have, I guess, I guess counties where you've seen some success in that that we can go and visit, look and see what they've done?
Absolutely. I can, I can speak just from where we live, you know, and we live in Orlando, but in unincorporated Orange County, there are several communities that we would consider either new urbanist communities or just more so walkable communities. Now, these are more compact and they're going to be slightly more dense than what you're maybe used to. So there's Avalon Park on the east side of Orlando and then Horizon West on the, the west side of Orange County. Those are just kind of two examples from an unincorporated standpoint where we live. There are other communities throughout the state in unincorporated areas. So Pasco County has Starkey Ranch, which is kind of based on a, a new urbanist theme. I don't know if you're familiar with that. There are some in, in St. John's County. So there, there's a Nocati. Now, some of these aren't as dense as you would expect, but they are, they are walkable. But I think probably in Pasco County, you'll see more of an effort to create a little bit more density in the future to, to help with that because you need it to be a little bit more compact in order, you know, for folks to be able to walk shorter distances.
I wanted to mention the Manatee County example. So we do work with them in the comprehensive plan and the land development regulations. And at one point, they came to us and said, we have these unincorporated areas just south of Bradenton. It's a hodgepodge, you know, McDonald's, drive-throughs, it's not very pedestrian friendly. And all the development coming to the county is always going by the interstate, you know, Lake, Lakewood Ranch, you know, that area. What can we do to incentivize development to come and place, you know, or come to the area where we have the utilities, where we have the transportation, where we have, you know, what they need? So we, we made some changes to the comprehensive plan and then to the land development regulations. And we created a system that is called the urban quarters. So basically, the idea was, we didn't want to just stop development because if we just go all the way to the other side and require everybody to be urban, we're going to stop development. So we didn't want to do that. So it's like, continue doing what you're doing, but if somebody's coming in with vertical mixed use, affordable housing, dedication of public open space, maybe a parking garage, we're going to give you stuff. What do you want? Density? You want intensity? You want height? What do you need? So it was like rolling out the carpet for the type of development that they wanted to see. So that it's in place, you know, it's just for the area south of Bradenton. And they had seen a few projects that have come in that meet the criteria. So, and on the other hand, when we talk about an entire county that has very diverse settings, you know, from one place to the next, we understand that when people live in a rural area, they elected to be far away from everything. They don't want a corner store. They don't want neighbors that they can see. So we have to respect that too. So we have to make sure that if we're going to create walkable areas, they're in the right place. It, it doesn't fit everywhere.
Great, thank you. Madam Chair, one, one follow-up question. And you, you answered it, I, I guess in part. My next question was, in the comp plans that, that you've, you've been a part of, it's easy enough to say, we would like this area to be more walkable and this area, this part of the county to be more walkable. When we're going through this process, do you deliver strategies for, all right, we understand you want this area, here are some ways that you can accomplish that? Is that, are, are those strategies that your company brings forward from your experience or how does that work?
Yeah, so in the comprehensive plan, we have to be careful not to be too specific. Sometimes you read comprehensive plans that read more like zoning regulations. You don't want to get to that point. This is the high level, the big picture scenario, right? But you do write policy that says what the county needs to do to get to where you want to get. So it could be maybe you need to do a small area plan for a specific area of the county. So that's something that comes after the comp plan, but it's not yet regulations. It's, okay, your neighbors get together, figure out what you want to do, you know, how, how you want to grow. And then from there, you go to land development regulations. Other times, like in Manatee, we just went straight from the comp plan to the land development code. So in the comprehensive plan, we said, these are the land use categories, these are your densities. But if you want to use the bonus system, your density can go up to here, up to there, intensity, same thing, a little bit higher here, higher there. And then you have policies that say, establish a system of bonuses and incentives in your land development code to incentivize the provision of affordable housing as defined by the county. So what they define as affordable housing may be different than what the state has or what you guys have. So yes, you provide the instructions for something to happen to get there. So that's part of it.
Do you have anything? Well, thank you so much. That was very informative. Appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
So Heather, I think you are up. Next presentation is by Heather Ansonosa at Neighbors Giblin Nickerson on mobility fees and impact fees.
Good morning. Yeah, so the, the topic is pretty broad. So if you guys have any specific issues, feel free to stop me at any time. I'm going to talk about impact fees or mobility fees. But in order to put them into context, it's because you guys have impact fees and because, as you'll learn, mobility fees are really just a specific type of an impact fee. I'm going to talk about a little bit both of them so that I can do some comparing and contrasting in order to put mobility fees into that perspective. I'm going to talk a little bit about the law of impact fees, not too much, I'm not going to get too much in the weeds. And then at the end, I am going to talk about a couple of recent cases, a U.S. Supreme Court case that you may have heard about. And then actually a case that has already been challenged on Senate Bill 180 for Manatee County. Let's see if I'm going to do this right. That's my first slide. Without getting too far down the rabbit hole into legalese and constitutional stuff, I do want to provide a little bit of legal background on the fee structures that you have and the allocation of taxing power under the 1968 Constitution, which is what we live and breathe in today. All forms of taxation, except ad valorem tax, at least for the moment, are preempted to the state. The, what this means is if you want to levy any kind of tax, you have to have general law authorization. Fortunately, not all of your revenue sources are considered taxes under our jurisprudence today. The Florida courts have found that under your broad home rule authority here, the, the counties have the home rule authority to impose a variety of alternative revenue sources by local ordinance and without general law authorization. There are really two big categories of these, both of which you're familiar with. One is special assessments. You guys have those in place today to fund various things, including fire, things like that, and capital improvements. And then the second broad category is fees. And under the fees, you're, think about your park and rec fees, you got building permit fees, you got impact fees, which is what we're going to focus on today, and we're going to talk about mobility fees as well. An impact fee and a mobility fee are both one category of a regulatory fee that you can impose without general law authorization. They are one-time charges imposed against new development to fund capital facilities that are necessary to serve that new growth. The purpose is to impose upon newcomers, new development, rather than making your existing taxpayers fund additional infrastructure. At its most basic level, an impact fee and a mobility fee are both these, these types of regulatory fees. Other regulatory fees that you may think about are like inspection fees, building permit fees. All of these charges that you may impose in your code share a couple of things in common that distinguish them and make sure from a legal perspective that they're not considered unconstitutional taxes. And they share a reasonable connection or a rational nexus between the activity or the service and the fee payer. A very important thing to keep in mind here, though, is that none of these regulatory fees can raise profit. They are not profit-making fees. There are some fees that are not regulatory fees that you can include a sort of profit margin in. Those are basically your proprietary fees, like utility fees and things like that. Impact fees are a very common type of regulatory fee around the state. They are targeted new development to fund those capital costs. And depending on the area, I mean, they could be a few hundred dollars. They could be tens of thousands of dollars. Osceola County imposed a, a new mobility fee last year. And I believe the final amount was, just for a single-family home, just for mobility, was around $20,000. But obviously, that is all, you know, based upon that community's needs. You think about Osceola, tourism, all that kind of stuff. So they, it's a very different county and it looks different. And that's why everything from a mo, impact fee to a mobility fee is going to be based upon local costs, local needs, local projects. Impact fees are a unique product of your local government home rule and are imposed under the sovereign authority to regulate land use. A little bit of history, which I think is interesting, is that in the 1960s, when Florida was really starting to grow, utility customers and Florida taxpayers began objecting to have to pay for line extensions and plant expansions and all these things to serve all these newcomers that were moving into the state. They began demanding that new, local governments find a way for these newcomers to pay their own fair share. Coincidentally, around this same time, if you look back in Chapter 177, this is when the state's modern subdivision regulations were also starting to be developed. And it was the combination of these two concepts that led to impact fees. If all developments were large in the state, then we could have stopped at those subdivision regulations because we could have had, you know, put things in our code that said, this subdivision has to, you have to build this, 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 and this, but not all development are subdivision level. And it's very, some things are not readily producible in small enough increments to reproduce on a infill here, a business here, a new house here. And that's why impact fees kind of came in to sort of fill that gap. But it was really public push that made impact fees come to the forefront in the state. For an impact fee to avoid classification as a tax, the Florida courts have developed a two-part test. And it's commonly called the dual rational nexus test. And you have to meet both prongs. One, you have, there has to be a reasonable connection between the need for the additional capital facilities and the growth. And the second, that there has to be a reasonable connection between the expenditure of the fee proceeds and the benefits accruing to growth. There's all kinds of legal tests that we jump through under here and things that we look at. I'm not going to get into. look at, and I'm not going to get into those, but at a basic level, is, do we have to put new capital in to serve this new growth? And when you get the money, you have to spend it within a reasonable time to provide the capital for which you charge the new development. Let's see. That leads me to mobility fees. I know you guys impose and collect a transportation or road impact fee now. A mobility fee is actually a specific type of an impact fee that grew out of road or transportation impact fees and was developed here in Florida as sort of an alternative to transportation concurrency. They are, like impact fees, they are one-time charges, opposed against new development to fund the capital facilities that is necessary to mitigate the impacts on your road and your transportation system, not just cars, but how people move. As recently defined by statute in 2024, a mobility fee means a local government fee schedule established by ordinance and based on the projects included in a local government's adopted mobility plan. And I'll talk a little bit more about what a mobility plan looks like. So, another little bit of history, mobility fee evolution. So, while impact fees began way back in the 60s and the 70s as our state was developing, mobility fees have more recent origins. Transportation concurrency began back in 1985, and at that point, when it was put in, transportation concurrency was mandatory and required counties and cities to ensure that adequate road capacity would be available concurrent with new development to offset the impacts of that development. Now, while that had a very good policy goal, as it became, as it implemented and began to spread throughout the state, it had a few unintended consequences. For example, it would, it tended to stop or limit growth in urban areas, probably where you wanted that growth to go, because meeting those transportation concurrency requirements as originally implemented in 1985 became very expensive. And so, what it tended to do was push development out, create an urban sprawl, and, which creates more issues as far as service and infrastructure delivery for counties and cities. Recognizing these problems, in 2009, the Florida Legislature created a panel to evaluate alternatives to transportation concurrency. They came back in 2011 and eliminated mandatory transportation concurrency when they replaced the 1985 Growth Management Act with the Community Planning Act. At that point, and today, it made transportation concurrency optional for counties and cities. A couple of years later, oop, I went back. A couple of years later, in 2013, the Legislature amended the Community Planning Act and adopted additional language to encourage local governments to adopt alternative mobility funding systems if they were going to eliminate transportation concurrency. At that time, they identified three sort of broad systems identified in statute. One was have concurrency. Two was a mobility plan with a mobility fee attached. And three was a non-mobility fee-based system, which is, I guess, leaves you guys with some creativity to look at potential long-term strategies to facilitate certain development standards, create exemptions for urban infill, things like that, to try and play within these concepts. In 2019, the Florida Legislature made it clear that any mobility-based funding system must comply with Section 163.31801, which is the Impact Fee Act that I'll talk about briefly. And then last year, the Legislature finally tweaked some of the provisions in Chapter 163 to define what a mobility fee is and define what a mobility plan is. So, a mobility fee is now defined as a local government fee schedule that is established by ordinance and based on projects included in an adopted mobility plan. Like a transportation impact fee, a mobility fee is a one-time fee paid by new development at the time of permit, either permit or CO, whenever you guys collect them. To cover the costs of improvements necessary to fully mitigate the development's traffic impacts on your transportation system, mobility fees must be calculated based on the projects adopted in a mobility plan. So, what is a mobility plan? A mobility plan is an alternative transportation system study developed by using a plan-based methodology and adopted into your comp plan that is intended to promote, and this is statutory language, I'll elaborate on this and make it, try and make sense, that is intended to promote a compact, mixed-use interconnected development served by a multimodal transportation system in an area that is urban in character or designated to be urban in character. So, what the heck does that mean? So, a mobility plan, unlike a, your current impact fee is a standards-driven impact fee. A mobility plan is identified, identifies various multimodal projects. So, specific projects, segment A on, on road X, specific transit projects, specific bike lane projects, any sort of transportation-related projects that are necessary to permit development, redevelopment, or infill. Examples are roads, sidewalks, bike paths, trails, but also roads, turn lanes, things like that. So, what are the differences? And I might get into what a mobility plan is by sort of contrasting and comparing that to what you have right now. So, hopefully, it will make sense. The differences and similarities between a traditional impact fee, which you have now, and if you look at your impact fee study, what you're going to see is that it used a standards-driven approach. So, what is the average cost to provide one lane mile of asphalt to expand? Or what is the average cost to, and it's going to include average right-of-way costs, average, you know, asphalt costs, shoulder costs, and you could have bike paths and sidewalks included within that, that scope as well. But it's based upon average costs. Mobility fees, in contrast, are not a separate and distinct type of fee, but as I said, they're a subset of a transportation impact fee. For both, you're going to impose it with a rate study, you're going to both impose by ordinance, neither can fund efficiencies, you all have heard that before, and both require credits and mandated offsets. So, a lot of those things look the same, but where the difference is, is how, one of the main differences is how it's calculated. So, instead of that standard average cost of a lane mile, a mobility fee is calculated specifically to fund identified projects. So, the first step in doing a mobility fee would probably be, and I'm not a transportation engineer, but would probably be doing some modeling. Where are our pinch points? What, what things do we need to plan to provide in the next 10 years, five, 10 years, in order to prevent this portion of our community from having long traffic delays and backlogs? What alternative modes of transportation do we want to promote in order to maybe alleviate? If we can't add lane miles here, how do we want to alleviate this, this planned and modeled backlogs in this area? And so, your mobility plan, instead of looking at average costs and, you know, average right-of-way, what we need to do generally is actually going to identify specific projects. Based upon that modeling, we are going to need to add an alternative corridor here. We're going to need to expand here. We're going to need to develop a transit system here, beef up our bus system here. So, your mobility plan actually is, identifies specific projects over your planning horizon that you are going to need to plan to build. And it doesn't have to be, like I said, just expanding road miles, adding turn lanes. You can, you can look at bike paths, assuming that you wanted to, like you, you just talked about, making walkable areas. So, in some, maybe you identify some of those areas, and in those areas, you want to promote alternative means of transportation so that everyone is not getting in their car. The mobility fee could help you fund some of the capital improvements necessary to make that a reality. But because of that, that plan-based methodology, there's a lot of upfront work needed to put a mobility fee in place. You've got to do some transportation modeling, most likely. You're going to have to have a mobility plan that identifies all of these projects. There have always been improvements-driven impact fees, transportation impact fees out there. Osceola County, if you want to look at theirs, has had one for decades. They turned that into a mobility fee, but they already had, like, the basics of that plan because they were already funding, their road impact fees already funded specific road projects. So, they were already set up that way. And so, they, it was a, a step further to add in mobility and, you know, because of their demographics and the type of tourism that they get, they get a lot of European tourists who don't necessarily want to get behind the wheel of a car and start driving down the road. So, they have, you know, people mover systems, buses, things like that. So, that is something, if you guys wanted to read up a little bit more, you may want to look at their system. It's going to be way more than you will need, at least if you decide to do a mobility fee for the next planning horizon, it's going to be more than what you would need. But it, it's something that maybe shows you what is possible and what you could work toward. So, that is one of the main distinctions between what an impact fee is and what a mobility fee is. One, it funds more than just vehicular lane miles. And two, the methodology, it's based upon, instead of a standards-driven, average-cost methodology, we're looking at specific projects. This is what we're going to do, this is what we're putting in the ground, and this is the cost to do it.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Kennard.
Heather, great explanation. I mean, you're, you're doing a fabulous job, honestly, of giving us some good information, I feel, that we need on mobility fees versus impact fees, or in comparison to impact fees. Do you feel like counties in the state of Florida, we'll say, are going, it, it sounds to me like more counties are going in this direction, that they're, they're leaving behind their transportation impact fee and going to, going to a mobility fee? Or is it just, you know, it just depends on the individual counties?
You are, I think you're correct. I think we are seeing that more, like, I mentioned, Osceola County has one, I know Nassau County has one, Ocalusa County, for example, just engaged somebody to develop a mobility plan for them. So, that's sort of the first step, and then it would come back for another decision, how do we want to fund that mobility plan? So, I think you're seeing more push in that direction, for sure, just because there are, if you think about it, there's, you, you can't pave the entire county, you can't make everything a roadway. There's, there's going to be segments of your roadways, I mean, even to what the, well, they're gone, but what the planner said earlier, like, even though you have an arterial road, which is intended to provide, you know, high-speed, long-distance travel throughout the entire county, when that road goes through an urban area, it doesn't look arterial anymore. So, and, and you, you're not going to necessarily be able to keep adding lane miles to those arterial roads through urban areas, it's just not possible. The, the right-of-way isn't there, and that's not how people want their communities to look either, and everyone doesn't want to live on a six-lane highway. And so, there is definitely a new understanding that we, we can't solve all of our movement problems and our, our travel problems by just keeping, focusing on vehicular movement. We've, we've got to have a different way of doing it. I think it's compound, I live in Tallahassee, and I live in a, I live downtown in, in their multimodal area. So, the, the intent and the push is for me to, I guess, walk areas and stuff, but it's, part of the problem I have is that it's hot. And so, and I don't know how you deal with that, but they're starting to do trolleys and things like that because, man, I'm not, I'm not walking, I'm not going to walk downtown when it's, you know, 100 degrees, but I might take a trolley. So, you know, and there's, and, like, the beach, the beach areas, like, on the, on the Gulf Coast up there, if you try to just solve all of the problems with getting people from point A to point B by expanding roads, it's never going to work because, I mean, you could spend an hour trying to get to dinner if you're, you know, if you're visiting Destin, for example. And so, they're exploring other ways to handle that, too. And, you know, maybe it's a, maybe there's a trolley system there or some sort of, of higher-capacity people movement system put into place. So, I think everyone's eventually going to have to look at those types of solutions for their local problems. And it may not be county-wide, it may be in just nodes.
Thank you. Commissioner Finnegan.
Sorry. Good presentation. I understand that mobility fees are in lieu of transportation concurrency, it's another avenue, but is it mobility fee or impact fee? Or do you have an, an impact fee for roads, and then you can also have a mobility fee for certain projects?
You would probably replace your existing impact fee with a mobility fee because they're going to be hitting the same types of needs and funding the same types of capital. And so, it would make sense to, I've never seen them exist, coexist together.
Okay, so, if you do one or the other, and we already have the impact fee, what is the benefit of changing that to the mobility fee?
The benefit would be that you'd be able to consider different types of projects and funding different types of needs, such as transit, if that was something that you wanted to move towards in certain areas. And a mobility fee can still fund your traditional road projects as well. It just provides a...
Right, I understand that, but I feel like already with our impact fee, we, we fall short of roads. So, I, I guess that's what I'm trying to see. So, if we do all this, we have to study and spend taxpayer money just to switch a mobility fee so we could do paths, but we're falling so short already in roads, so why would we, how would we explain that to people that we're going to spend money so we can make a change, so we could fund something other than the roads that, obviously, we lack in capacity and need to expand? That's what I'm trying to make sense of, and it's not making sense to me.
Well, the point of, I mean, and I'm not saying that you have to, that's a policy decision for you all, but the point of a mobility fee is that maybe we don't have to, we're looking at it right now from a road perspective. Maybe if we have these alternative means of transportation or alternative corridors, we don't have to expand that road we thought we were going to have to expand. We're going to get people from point A to point B in a different way.
Understood. Thank you.
Commissioner Davis.
Great presentation, Heather. Thank you, as always. Does this provide any additional flexibility on driving the type of development that we need, for example, workforce housing, in terms of what it ends up costing the developer?
I mean, just like with your impact fees, as far as, you know, making sure that these things are reasonable and that you're not crowding out some of the, the lower workforce housing or affordable housing, you can still, you can provide exemptions for these as well or buy them down. So, you still have some of those tools in your toolbox.
So, is it basically a wash, one way or the other, or is it more flexibility, less flexibility, the same?
It's a wash from that perspective because, I'll get there, the Florida Impact Fee Act covers both. And there's, from an affordable housing perspective, there's specific language in the Florida Impact Fee Act that allows you to exempt affordable housing without sort of backfilling it. So, you, you're good there, you're going to be covered regardless of the type of transportation funding that you put into place.
Thank you.
Commissioner Barry.
Okay, when I, when I'm sitting here listening about this and I'm, I'm seeing multimodal, okay, so you've got walking, you've got bicycles, what about golf carts? In other words, you, instead of putting in sidewalk, you put in a bike path, which also allows for golf carts. So, in that planned development that you just made, which is off of the main road, you give the mobility fees, and yeah, they put in the, you know, the roads and they can ride their golf carts all they want in that section. But to get out of that section, out of that planned development that you've got... But to get out of that section, out of that planned development that you've got moving in, that develop, you know, what, what pays for the main roads if we don't keep impact fees? If you go to just mobility fees, that is for a section, correct? It's for like a planned section, and that's to keep that section up and get it, so like, I'm seeing what, you know, I think Commissioner Finnegan is saying, the main roads are the ones that are not going to get paid for with mobility fees, only because you're not going to have enough.
Well, the fee level would be something that would have to be determined, but you, mobility fees can fund and do fund road projects as well. And I wouldn't, I would expect, I mean, you could have a mobility fee system where you had a certain fee for your regional arterial type of system, and you could have a, a secondary lesser fee that covered maybe specific areas, nodes that you want to urbanize and you want to promote more walkability, more alternative means of transportation. But those funds could only be spent there, but development would also pay for the, the countywide infrastructure that's needed.
Okay, so a mobility fee, say, to one company over at Tuscany Ranch, they've only got one section of 491 that they are butting against. But we need a much larger section of 491 paid for, or at least developed into a, a main arterial road. Okay, we could, what you're saying is charge mobility fees large enough to cover what they want in the Tuscany Ranch development and do our development for our road for our county.
You could have two aspects of it. I mean, and you could even, with a road impact fee, you could do the same thing. You can have a countywide arterial road impact fee or mobility fee that is funding sort of your countywide system. And you could have a more localized, community-based fee that is going to be spent just in that area for specific projects. So you have some, you have flexibility with both of them.
So you can divide up the mobility fee itself, and I say 60% goes to this and 35% goes to that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Great presentation.
Okay, a couple of things. Florida Impact Fee Act, just to keep in mind, if you go to a mobility fee, all of the requirements in the Florida Impact Fee Act, which includes phasing and all of that stuff, applies equally. So just keep that in mind, I'm not going to talk too much about that. We can skip that because you guys know what that is. Mobility fee legislation, one thing to note here is that as these concepts develop, the Florida Legislature is actively kind of tweaking the provisions. So if you decide to, you know, start looking, getting a mobility plan pulled together, when you come back in, you know, two years and are looking at maybe moving to a mobility fee, keep in mind that what, what it looks like may have changed between now and then. So just make sure that you're interacting with your county attorney on a regular basis in order to ensure that you stay within the parameters that the Florida Legislature is prescribed at that time. Let's see, we talked about that. A couple of things, the case law. So you all may have heard about the U.S. Supreme Court case Sheets versus Eldorado County. I just wanted to let you know, because I, I get this question a lot when I'm speaking to commissioners, they're like, well, I've heard impact fees and mobility fees have been outlawed because the U.S. Supreme Court said that you couldn't do them. That's not the case. That is a, that is a Supreme Court case that dealt with an impact fee out of California. And they did find, in a, in a very narrow ruling, they did not rule on whether an impact fee at issue was a taking, but they did put some additional clarity out there that talked about the dual rational nexus test and things like that, and stating that, you know, a, a regulatory fee like that could be a taking. They did not outlaw impact fees, I just wanted to put that at rest. Two, on Senate Bill 180, the Manatee County, and, and it relates to the topic of impact fees and mobility fees, Manatee County has, has been sued for alleged violations of Senate Bill 180. They put a new, some new impact fees, and increased impact fees in place. And the lawsuit is alleging that their impact fees are land development regulations that are more restrictive or burdensome. And so that case just got filed, and we're still in like the very early procedural movements of that case. So we don't have really anything to report as far as that litigation. But in case this becomes a thing, I just wanted to let you know that was out there, you may want to watch for it. Two, there is already case law that indicates that impact fees are not land development regulations, that's out of the Second District. So we're hoping that the way that case will be defended, and we are working on that with the county attorney's office, is by differentiating and showing that impact fees are not actually covered by Senate Bill 180. But depending on the outcome of that case, that could, if you guys start talking about mobility fees, you're just going to want to make sure that you stay aware of what happens there. The, one of the complicating factors in Manatee County is that because of their local administration and governance, how they, how they implement their impact fees, and who, which department does it, they do have their impact fees housed in their land development code. So it makes it more, a more complicated argument for them. But impact fees are generally not required to be in land development code, and the argument there is going to be that they're not land development regulations. So you, you heard that you may get some additional clarity from the legislature and maybe some additional amendments to Senate Bill 180 as this, as the new legislative session takes place. I think they're going to start committee meetings in October, so just a few months. You may, may also get clarity from the courts.
Heather, real quick, impact fees, you can only assess, well, you can do your study once every four years, and then you have a limitation. Do the mobility fees have the same?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Kennard.
Yeah, the mobility fees, well, let me back up a little bit. Our impact fees are set like everybody else's, that they are assessed by the, you know, either commercial or residential type of structure, and there's a set fee for that. Now, mobility fees, can they vary from one location in the county to the next? If, you know, if you want to encourage infill in one particular area where the infrastructure's built out, that the mobility fee would be less there versus, you know, out in the North Forty where you're increasing the need for expanding infrastructure in the future?
Yes, actually, you have that flexibility with an impact fee or a mobility fee.
Okay, all right, very good, thank you.
Didn't Pasco do something like they broke it up into a quadrant, like they have rural, urban, suburban, and one other one, I can't remember?
Yep, you can have expenditure districts where you just, you collect the same fee, but a certain portion of it, like we were talking about earlier, is required to be spent here. But you could also have different fee amounts based upon the needs of specific areas. And whether it's quadrants or whether a different, you know, puzzle works for Citrus County would be something that would be tailored to your specific areas and how your traffic moves and how your communities have developed.
Thank you. Commissioner Barrett.
So you're saying we could do mobility like we used to do impact fees, which were based on the square footage of living space? Because that's what impact fees used to be, was on the square footage of it. Now we've gone to an impact fee that's one price. It doesn't go by square footage, but we could do that with mobility.
You, you could do that with either, depending on if the data is there to support it.
Anything else? Thank you, Heather.
Thank you.
Did you have something? All right, open it up to the public now. Anyone wishing to address either of the workshop topics this morning, please come forward. We'll ask that you fill out a green card, state your name and your address for the record, and you can give it, you can fill it out afterwards and give it to the clerk.
Greg Thomas, 1865 West Sundown. First of all, I'd like to thank the staff for all the work that they do. I appreciate it and thank you for all your efforts. I'd also like to thank each and every one of you for sitting up there and taking the bullets. It's not easy to do what you do. I appreciate what you do. I don't always agree with it, but thank you for your efforts. Just for my, my own edification, who here is a native Floridian?
You, you...
All right, all right. I am not. I'm, I'm opposed to Senate Bill 180. And the reason for that is because I trust you and I trust this staff. I don't want Tallahassee dictating to me what goes on here. The common theme for me, listening to the speakers, is that growth is here and we're kind of behind the eight ball. We need to catch up. Mrs. Barrett, 50% of the voices in the county, boy, I appreciate the thought, but that ain't going to happen. The only way it is, maybe install some lazy boys. But you're not going to get 50% of the voice, it's just not going to happen. And the reason for that is because the folks vote, and then they trust you to act in their behalf. They don't have time to be running to town halls and all this and that and the other thing. I'm lucky I'm retired, that's why I moved down here. But people trust you to act in their better behalf. Now, I have gone to some of them, the big one I went to was the Sun Coast over at the, the college campus. And I really thought that was hugely informative, good stuff, I loved it. But to come to a regular town hall, oh, I'm sorry I missed yours, I would have liked to have gone to that, but I was, I couldn't make it. And I'm not working.
We'll have more.
I'm sorry?
We'll have more.
Okay, I'm, I'm looking forward to that. I hope it comes out in the Chronicle, because I read that Chronicle. That's where I learned about a lot of the stuff. The schedule, I mean. If this young lady right here is not on staff, you should get her on staff.
We can't afford her.
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm, I'm feeling that. But in all due respect, trolleys, buses, bikes, moving people here and there and everywhere, the various fees that's going on, I think we should worry more about flooding in Crystal River and around this area every time it sprinkles. We need to address that. Infrastructure is the key, got to fix that. It seems like you're kind of fixated on the roads, I would tend to agree with that, too. You got to fix the roads, but infrastructure is the key to everything. I like it here, that's why I moved here. I like what you're doing. I don't always agree with it, like I said, but thanks for your efforts. I, for one, appreciate it.
Thank you, and thank you for being here.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Devon Corallo, and I speak to you on behalf of the Sierra Club Adventure Coast Group. I wrote down a few notes that I'll run through quickly, but first I want to begin by applauding your efforts to address the impact of the increasing development. This development affects our quality of life, it increases traffic and infrastructure needs, and it reduces freshwater drinking supplies. It is especially harmful to the natural environment because it causes loss of habitat and wildlife in many instances. And the impact on our springs is showing in Crystal River, Kings Bay, Homo Sassa, and the Chazawoodza Springs. All are officially classified as impaired for nutrients that threaten manatees and degrade water quality that supports our tourism and quality of life. So we recommend a few things here. One, construction standards that require high water and energy conservation in design, build, and use in all new buildings, including public buildings and schools. Secondly, strengthen preservation of land within the wildlife corridors and preserve ecologically sensitive lands from development, especially within the spring sheds. Three, expand installation of advanced wastewater treatment facilities to replace leaky septic systems and require advanced wastewater treatment on all new developments, especially in the spring sheds. Period. Four, adopt an urban lawn rainy season fertilizer ban to further reduce nutrient loading in our springs and waterways, nutrients are the problem. Five, strengthen the comp plan to restrict waivers or reductions of buffers, setbacks, and green space, encourage low-density development. Six, reduce urban sprawl and protect rural areas from development. Seven, assess climate change impacts, sea level rise, flooding, and hurricanes, and plan accordingly. Restrict development in high-hazard flood zones, that's only logical going forward. And finally, legislative delegation hearings are coming up, so we recommend that you support new state legislation to allow efforts to pursue smart growth and comp plan amendments and, and remedy the recent legislation that restricts your authority on land use, issues in SB 180. Thank you so much for your good efforts. It's a, it's an opportunity that we appreciate working with you on, and we'll support you in every way we can. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for being here. Anyone else? Ma'am? Devon? Can you fill out a green card, please?
Madam Chair, may I respond?
Commissioner Davis.
I hope that you're going to stick around for the time certance at just after 1:00 because I invited North Florida Land Trust to come in and give a presentation specifically on many of the items on your list, wildlife corridors, recharge areas, so on and so forth. The only comment I would make, I love your list, and I, of course, you know that we did the fertilizer ordinance. Not doing density is completely counter to reducing sprawl. So we, you know, that, that's a conflicting statement there, but otherwise, great list.
Unfortunately, I can't be here this afternoon, I would love to be.
Thank you.
But I'll watch the video.
You can watch it online, or hopefully some of your folks will be here.
Thank you so much.
Is there anyone else from the public? Seen none, we'll close open to the public. Bored, you have any comments? All right. Join us at 1:00, sure it'll be spirited, and if you're really bored, you could come at 5:01, but for now, we are adjourned.